This time I'll call the July 15th meeting to order for the Dixon County Commission. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To republi- four inches stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the agenda, we have a couple of things to add to the agenda. We have one regarding the approval of a coroner services agreement. We also are going to add 10 minutes for attorney-client and executive session. We'll have that at the end of the meeting. So with those two additions, I would move that we approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
The motion and the second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The consent agenda includes the minutes of the July 8th meeting. It also includes fund expenditures of $536,959.67. Wire payments, which is a security of $3,713. Contract services of $2,500. Abatements, $141.80.
I move to accept the consent agenda.
We have the motion and second for approval of the consent agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This time we'll go to commission comments. Ron?
Just thankful for the weather. We've got some good weather for harvest and get some rains now that'll up, keep things from getting too dry. So a little bit concerned about the fatalities and things we've had on roadways lately. We're all concerned with that, but hopefully things will get better.
Okay, Craig?
Yeah, last Sunday I went down to the track in the fair at Harrington. It was about two and a half hours. It was a show and go, which is bring your animal in and you show it and then you go. I was really surprised that it had a, I don't know, probably 50, 60 hog. And I didn't have the steers and stuff, but it was well attended, I mean, by the people that were involved in it. Monday, Stroll Hall, CNDI, whatever it is, but it's drug court. I spent about six hours there. We're going implementing drug court in Dixon County. That's all I knew.
Okay. The other evening, I attended the Economic Development Council meeting in Dixon County. They had kind of a kickoff on driving Dickinson County. They're in the midst of raising some funds. They've had some 56 individuals throughout the county participate. They've raised in pledges, 1.250 in pledges. But they also have maybe another few dozen people that they have talked to that are giving consideration and looking at their budgets and seeing what they could do to promote economic development. There was a good turnout. It was over at Chapman. They have a batting cage area workout center over there. I said, Craig, what is the official name of that?
Dickinson County Sports.
Dickinson County Sports. So anyway, that's DK Sports. And that's where they had the event. And just a really a very nice facility, but it was being used a lot. I had to talk to someone beforehand and they said their son was going to go over there for the batting cage. And I said, well, I think that's where my meeting's going to be at or this meeting. And so they called and they said, well, yeah, we've got the batting cages closed for a few hours. But you know, for some of the individuals that are trying to improve their skillset on that or keep it up, it draws people not just from Chapman, but throughout the area, so.
You might also mention that there's a clerking as an officer too.
Yes, yes. And that is something that they have their office up here on 15th Street, but they also have another office over there that they maintain. Earlier today, also I mentioned Central Kansas Mental Health. We're having our monthly board meeting over at Salina. And that's going to be on Monday. Earlier today, we heard from John Holgren. He gave us a little bit of an update on some of the things that are going on with this new variant as far as the coronavirus is concerned. And kind of gave us some information of what's being done. And it is something that's being monitored. And they still have the encouragement for people if they choose that there's vaccines that are available. And you can take advantage of that. Statistically, what he was indicating is that some people that had had a vaccine, even if they got that, they had milder symptoms. But anyway, that is something that's available. We also looked at our budget and kind of have some final numbers. And so we're going to be setting our budget hearing and publishing that as per regulation. Is there anything else that anyone would want to bring up as far as public or commission comment? We do not have any petitions or proclamations. And we do have this time for public comment. Dawn Hammett has offered to come by here today. And she's here today and is going to give us an update on some of the information regarding the Eisenhower Presidential Library and so on. So Dawn?
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to come speak to you today. I appreciate it. We have, as you are aware, reopened the Eisenhower Presidential Library Museum two months ago, maybe two and a half months ago. And we added the place of meditation to our public access availabilities. We are currently open to the public Monday through Saturday from 10 to 4:00. So we've extended the hours from the beginning of this as well. We are still doing online ticket sales only. And it's timed as well so that we can manage social distancing throughout the day. And what we have found since we have increased the hours is that we are not sold out at the first thing in the morning, which is great because that allows for walk-ups to have availability to come in. So I'm really pleased that we have, we have found a way to increase availability, especially for the walk-up people. One of the things I wanted to alert you about is that the National Archives and Records Administration has approved and appropriated funds to do a renovation on the Boyhood Home. This is really important to me and I'm absolutely over the moon pleased about this. We found that a lot of the wood on the exterior of the building has been rotten over the years. Of course, we are, you know, most of us live in wooden structures in this town, in this county. So we understand this situation. What this plan is going to do is replace all of the rotten wood on the exterior of the building. It's going to recover the two roofs. We have a shingle roof and a metal roof. So we're going to redo the two roofs. Of course repaint the whole building because we're going to change out some of the wood. We are also going to be able to move some of the drainage away from the building, which of course will help long-term preservation. And we're going to upgrade the HVAC system and upgrade the fire suppression system. So this is going to be a big project that is really important for the longevity of this structure. We are currently in the scheduling phase with our contractor and subcontractors. And it looks as if the construction will begin the end of August, beginning of September. And you know, when you're planning a construction project, this is still a little iffy. I mean, I've been told, yeah, I thought I'd hand you the little joke. I have been told that construction time estimates are about eight to 10 weeks. I have no way of estimating that. It's not my profession, but I'm being told about eight to 10 weeks. My input to the contractor is we need it done as quickly as possible with as little interference to our public as we can. So when that moves forward, of course, I'll let you guys know about it. The one thing, one news piece that I needed to share is that with our local COVID numbers increasing, the National Archives has regressed the staff only at this point to a Phase 1 level of staffing in the office. It is not at this point interfering with our public access, but more of our staff is back on telework and fewer of our staff are in the office for the time being. Now, I'm no epidemiologist and I'm no doctor. What I'm hoping is that what we're seeing is just this little blip that I believe other communities have recognized as time goes on. So I'm still wearing my rose colored glasses. I think this is short-lived.
Okay. Thank you for that update. And it certainly is so important to Abilene and Dixon County and actually the whole state and nation and world as far as the Presidential Library. And just, I think it was last night or so, but it was one of the History Channels and, or it was a program where they were actually talking about some of the World War II things. And as they're going through some of the pictures and showing, they were saying, obviously, you know, this is General Patton and this is President Eisenhower and so on. But you know, the stories and the things that took place back then, to be able to have the library here and museum is a great, great honor and privilege that we have. So thank you for the work you do. Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir.
This is off the subject. I know you're from New Orleans. Ask Quam Manuel, is it still open?
I believe so, yep. I'll let you know on the back.
Okay. And we're going to go on for another 10 or 15 minutes. You're welcome to stay, but also if you have things to do.
I do.
It'd be fine to have you exit now.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, if there are additional public comments, there's some that are online. If there's anyone that would have a comment, this would be opportunity for that. If you would let us know.
I forget Lori Armstrong.
And kind of the same thing of go ahead and please proceed, but give your name and address and your comments, please.
Good morning. This is Lori Megan Armstrong, 1173 Old Forty, Abilene, Kansas. I want to say good morning. And Commissioner Chamberlain's mic is, it flutters in and out pretty badly when he's talking. There's no way for me to provide any feedback through this new format. And then the other thing, I just want to provide some feedback as far as this webinar is concerned. I don't love it mostly because I can't see who else is online with us. So I can't tell if I've invited somebody to come listen, can't see if they're there. I can't communicate like I would be able to if I was sitting in an open area with you guys. I can't like lean over and whisper or pass it out to somebody. There's zero communication at this point. It's like viewing a live feed, which is, which is great and accessible, but doesn't make it as interactive as you previously had it. And I enjoyed being able to see which county members were there because their names would be attached to them. So I would have a name of the face. So it just definitely was more informing for people on my end to be able to know who's in the room, who's talking. Like I know that was Dawn Hammett, but I don't know that she was actually there. So I recognize her voice, but does just some feedback on that. And then, which I realize you guys are trying. So I don't know why we switched to this version. But the other one was definitely preferred as far as accessibility from a user endpoint on this side. The other thing I want to ask about is John Holgren presented a bunch of information about county statistics and state statistics. Are we going to make that available to the public for viewing? Because it was really hard to understand some of the data that was being presented since it wasn't displayed on the screen here? Or is that something I need to do for open records request?
If you want to stop by my office, I'll just have my copy down there and you can have that. Otherwise, if you want to print it off, there is a procedure to go through that you go ahead and submit that you would like to have the record and then you pay for the, just print it off.
Okay. Whichever way is preferable for you, I'd be glad to do.
Okay. But yes, you could stop by my office and I'll just leave it up there on the front desk and you can have that. And it was just a good overview of kind of what's going on. And so appreciate your comment.
Absolutely. And I hope that you guys, I really appreciated the presentation this morning. It seemed really thorough. The only pieces that I was hoping you guys would ask some more questions about was that it didn't have information about how many locally were hospitalized. And I think that would be very valuable information, especially it's really not an if, it's a when. We come into the cold flu season this fall that we have that data and that we're capturing that. And we create a process for that now while the numbers are relatively small. So we don't end up with our tails in a pinch later relying on the state to provide data. We could be collecting even just locally at our hometown hospital. That was the only thing I'd hoped that you guys would have maybe asked more about. I know you asked if we had that, but I think maybe almost requiring it to be captured shouldn't be difficulty. And then as we venture into the school year, Mr. Holgren suggested a quick test be provided to the schools that they can get at no cost from the state. That would be a nasal swab to our students. I think that if you consider going that route, that should absolutely require parental consent to have done to our students. And we need to figure out why, how that works in future before we get there. Because I think it was, it's not a terrible idea. I just don't know that I want my kids swabbed every time they're close contact. So there needs to be a balance there. And I didn't hear any discussion about parental consent there. So I was a little concerned how that conversation went. But other than that, I appreciate your guys' conversation and looking forward to the future and trying to manage something that's got a hard, you can't, you can't predict that crystal ball and go so far, huh?
That's right. Okay, well, thank you for your comment. I will mention, and I kind of took John Holgren's presentation on that, that that's, that's an option. And you know, procedurally, you know, is something that could be done to try to keep students in school as much as possible. But having said that, he also is going to be very communicative with the school superintendents. And you know, that would be something on their policy. I mean, I think they would have to make some decisions in regards to that and certainly would understand and be aware of it. That they will reach out to the principals and at each of the schools.
Since we were talking school stuff here at county, I figured I'd, I'd share that here as well. But I do plan on sharing that with the appropriate superintendent and board members. But I appreciate your, appreciate your foot. Thanks, sir.
I would add that the school districts already have the quick tests. They've had those, they were provided directly to them months ago by the state. And I know one district utilized some. And as far as the authority views, that would be a board, school board decision, not a county level decision, so.
Okay. And I know also John Holgren had mentioned that they go through the nurses at the school. But yes, I think if you do have concerns on that though, that would be something to reach out to some of the school board, board members. But it is good to mention it here also.
We got Rhonda Booker right now.
Okay, yes, Rhonda? We're trying to get you unmuted so we can hear from you. Okay, Rhonda, can you hear us? And if you want to speak, now we still don't hear you.
Yeah, I sure you're unmuted. You should be able to speak.
We'll go ahead and move on. And we hope it's not a technical difficulty where you were trying to speak and we just couldn't hear you. And we also have it available. So like if earlier, like when Dawn Hammett was here, I mean, if you'd notify us if someone wants to be present at the meeting so that way we can be sure and have seating accommodated. At this time, we'll go to our reports from county officers and our first Brad Harmon.
Okay, in your packet, I provided you a copy of the letter from Barney and Associates regarding their audit for the county for last year. They're scheduled to come in next week and provide that information to you. But I wanted to give you the opportunity to review the letter between now and then. I will tell you that there were no deficiencies and I think that's what she will report to you next week. So also, just a little bit on the schedule. We're beginning to schedule the training for the jail staff moving into the new jail. We're getting down to that point where, as Dawn said, it's a little iffy on construction. But we're hoping if things go well by the last week of this month, which is just two weeks away, we will be able to get that training scheduled. Prior to that, be able to schedule the open house, get that publicized and be ready to get those things done and move our inmates over into the jail. So we're getting close to that. We've got a few milestone things that need to be completed. And the, yeah, control people that are actually control the jail controls and electronics and cameras and security things will, will be coming in for a week and a half, for two weeks and doing their final install and tweaks and adjustments. And then they'll actually do the training for the jail staff. So we're working, working to get that scheduled. So obviously, once that's done, then the demolition people can move in on the second floor of the courthouse and start cutting the steel out of the old, old jail and get it removed and progress with the renovation, so. Martin had informed me that we are going to put, submit an application to KDOT for some off-system bridge funding for a structure at 1160 1100 Avenue. We're 99% sure we won't get funded on that. But at the advice of Swab Eaton, or one of our bridge engineering companies, if we don't submit, or if we submit, that keeps it before them, KDOT, and makes our chances in the future much greater. So we're going to go ahead and submit one and the next one that we, we feel like we need and keep that ahead of them. And it's somewhat of a strategy, I guess, to be more successful in the future. So last week, Chuck Scott, Ron Marsh, city manager and myself, went over to Salina and met with Salina officials and Sling County officials at Great Plains Manufacturing. And the purpose for the meeting was simply to talk about jobs and some of the challenges that we're going to face in this area moving forward. The two primary concerns, obviously, as I think Lynn mentioned, it was discussed at EDC meeting too, was housing and childcare. And we lack both in both the Sling County area and Dickinson County. So Great Plains is one of your partner with, with both, both of our counties to see what can be done on both. So we've got some kind of interesting meetings coming up with them. And we'll continue to participate in that where we can and work towards addressing those challenges. I know next week we have a, the EDC has set up a meeting for the childcare providers coming up to, in our county to talk about what we can do for them as, here in the city or the EDC, to help try to promote that. You know, we kind of went through that a year or two ago with them and we came up with some changes. Actually resulted in the building next door, the hospitals, running through Depot, being contracted out and expanded with another business in town. And it was pretty successful. So hopefully we can be as successful this time around and working together with them, so. We talked a little bit in the work session about the disaster declaration. And Lynn had had somewhat questioned why that was still in effect. I just kind of wanted to clarify that the disaster declaration simply provides us as a county, the availability of resources from the state and federal government that without it, we're don't, we're not, are not available to us. I think there are a number of people that confuse the disaster declaration with providing authority for things like a health order and fear that we may issue a health order for masks or something again. I can't say that won't happen. I don't know what the future will bring with, with COVID again. But the health orders do not require the disaster declaration. It actually has nothing to do with it. The disaster declaration does save us a lot of money. And one example of that would be earlier this week. The Harrington Hospital had a patient or patients that required certain drugs. In this case, the remdesivir per treatment. That drug is in such high demand, it's not available on the open market. You can't, they can't get it through the normal sources. And so Chancey made the request to the state and the state provided that drug to the Harrington Hospital due to our disaster declaration being in place at no cost, and they got it. So there's at least one patient in Harrington that was treated with a drug that otherwise probably wouldn't have been available if it wasn't for us having the emergency declaration in place. And all the declaration does is that notifies the state that Dickinson County has exhausted all their resources locally and we need help. And we're asking for help. And that help could come in the form of medicine. We also regularly request testing supplies for the Abilene Hospital for COVID tests and things of that nature and get those. And they provide them to them at no cost. So it's an ongoing thing and I don't have a list, haven't seen what all we have requested, but it's substantial. And without that disaster declaration in place, that's not available. So I just wanted to kind of put some clarification on that. That is why we continue to leave the disaster declaration in place. Because it does benefit us tremendously, so. And there's absolutely nothing negative to it for the citizens of Dickinson County. Absolutely nothing, so. I think that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Doug?
I don't have anything until executive session.
Okay. Go to notices and communications. Just had a couple of things here. Government Technology, we did receive something from them. And then also, Harrington Community Building, they're having a, an awards banquet that's going to be taking place on August 21st. And then the county news, we received that. Was there any other communication that any of you received? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on. We do not have any resolutions, but we do have an agreement regarding coroner services. And Brad, you had mentioned this had come up, that we just needed to formalize what the discussions had been with, with Dr. Holmes, that he would continue as our coroner.
Yes, this is an agreement that formalizes that beginning January 1 of 2022. Essentially what it does is it makes him a part-time employee that would be eligible for capers. It is, as far as expenses to the county, it's a neutral expense item simply because the, any cost that the county would have to submit on behalf of Dr. Holmes for capers, we reduced our compensation to him by the exact same amount at his request. So this really come about because as a hospital employee, was there combining with Salina Regional, his capers would be, would no longer exist. He wanted to continue as capers. So it helps him in the fact that he can continue with that. It also helps us in the fact that we've got a contracted service with someone that, as you all know, we, we had a difficult time finding someone to do that function. And unfortunately, recently, he's been very busy doing that function. So this helps us. It's a win-win for both sides and it will not cost us any more money than what we were already contracted to pay him. So, but it would not take effect till January 1.
And we would need a motion to adopt this agreement?
I'll make that motion.
So we have the motion and the second, that we enter this agreement for coroner consultant services. Any other discussions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. The, we do not have any unfinished business. Not have any other business to consider. Before we go to executive session, is there anything else that someone would want to bring up? Otherwise, I move that we enter executive session. And we would do that at 11:30 for 10 minutes for attorney-client privilege.
I'll second that.
We have the motion, the second, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries.
Will be.
Yes, it'd be Doug Thompson, our attorney, the commissioners, and also Brad Harmon, our administrator. So I guess you need to put us on mute or queue out, however you do that.
Yep.
Okay, at this time, I'd make a motion that we return to regular session from executive session.
I'll second that.
We have the motion and the second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. We're back in regular session. We did have an executive session for attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. We've just received some information and updates for consideration. And there's no action or any further motions to be taken based on that executive session. So is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have the motion and the second. I'll give the second to adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned.